Forty. Tony, did you want to make any comments?
I think I've made all my comments. Mr. Tinkle had a good comment, suggestion. He had on the first page in the, we'll call it the last paragraph of this Fourth Amendment, to add some language so that it will read as follows. Paragraphs one through twenty-four inclusive of the agreement as amended and all of the attendant exhibits are deleted in their entirety. So it takes out all the exhibits from the original agreement and all the amendments. Gets rid of those because now we're using the new exhibits. And I think that's a good suggestion.
I didn't have anything else.
Okay. Dave, do you have any other questions?
Can I go back to the other one where I can read it easier?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. The, it's four point one. It's on Agenda Page seventy. Okay. What you're doing is extending Severn Trent's contract to three thirty-one, two thousand eighteen.
Yes.
Is this correct, right?
That's correct.
And then it will go out to bid at that point?
That's correct.
Okay. My next question on Agenda Page seventy-eight. Okay. Will there be anybody in those meetings of Pelican Preserve and the Advisory Committee since Diane was usually at those meetings and since she's not doing the minutes? Will there be somebody attending those meetings to answer any questions?
We're not anticipating anybody being there.
My understanding was though if there was a request for a staff, particular staff person like L., if it had to do with landscaping questions.
Correct.
They could invite her to attend.
Correct. We've been trying to, eventually, we're going to regroup with some procedures with the committees to make us more effective just to be sure that they have sent over any questions in advance and so they can be prepared and not necessarily need somebody on the fly at the meetings. So I think that will help. But yes, of course, if they needed to, you know, request that staff attend, then that would be different. But just to sit through the entire meetings, then we're not anticipating that.
So if a question develops during the meeting, okay, can a staff come in to answer that question?
If they're very old.
Okay. Just asking. Thank you. Those are the two questions I had.
Dale, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Good?
Nope.
I'm good.
Nope.
And I had previously reviewed this and the exhibits was a good idea. I didn't really.
So we want to do a motion to approve this pending?
In substantially final form, subject to review and comments by counsel for Severn Trent and review by staff and your district council as to whether or not changes are minor and otherwise approve it to be executed by the chairman if they're minor.
Couldn't say it was any better.
Ed, make a motion.
Ditto.
Okay, with that, if there's no other comment, I'll call the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion. All right. Now to the next. Agenda item, Girl Scout Building.
April White, your business manager. Okay, so in my rush, I apologize. I had put in a formula in our cost estimates and forgot to have Stephen look at it. So after he looked at it, he revised it. So I handed this out to you today and I have highlighted in yellow the three lines that have changed.
Give us a second role. I'm meeting here.
Looks like there's a single page.
Okay, so the only revisions were including the entire cost of the loan, which is the loan fees and then the interest expense. And then at the bottom, for estimating the monthly costs, Stephen suggested putting in a contingency just in case there was something that we missed. We reviewed all of the bills because we kind of wanted to know what the cost was to operate this building as is, what the estimated cost is going to be if we increase the size of the building versus the estimated cost to operate the Girl Scout Building. And so that's what I had to go back and update was just those three lines. So I believe that in the overall scheme of things as far as considering borrowing money to make the purchase, if that's approved, that's kind of a fundamental cost that I don't think is necessarily going to change the, whether or not this item is approved. So with that said, as far as the revisions, what you have before you, and I will also look to Tony for suggested guidance, since how what is being requested is to purchase the Girl Scout Building. What you have before you is a summary of six items that we would need approved. And really, this is not significantly different from what was brought to you, I believe it was back in July, on July twenty-first. I will tell you that the cost of the Girl Scout Building has gone down as far as on the market. It went down to four fifteen. And I was able to, we were able to get from the realtor the issues that have been corrected in the building since the building was vacated. The building was vacated in the fall of two thousand and fourteen. But they have been maintaining the facility. And do you have any specific questions? How do you want to approach the conversation?
Madam Chairperson, I have several.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. April, your recommendation, number two, excuse me, number one, negotiating range of three fifty to four fifteen. I personally think that the three fifty is fine, but the four fifteen is way too high and it ought to be at three seventy.
You mean capped at three seventy?
Yes. Negotiating in the public like we have to do is one of the darn difficult things of running a public organization like this. Nonetheless, to show your hand to your opposite by setting this at four fifteen and indicating to the residents that we may pay that much, I think both of those are mistakes and I would strongly recommend that it be three fifty to three seventy. Secondly, I would like for you or somebody to explain to me why we need to even consider a loan at this time since we have a budget of eight hundred, soon to be nine fifty in fiscal seventeen that was originally scheduled to expand and remodel this building.
Okay, so with the decision and what we tried to do, because this was coming to you for approval, is two other elements which we thought were very material to your decision and how we proceed. And that is what we're going to do with the storage facility and then also what we're doing currently with our two thousand and seventeen budget such as the reorganization costs, the items that we've already approved and the projects we've been working on that wasn't originally budgeted. So what Stephen and Chris and I have been working on is a reprioritization of the two thousand and seventeen budget. And he has crafted, Stephen has crafted for you a document that is basically a proposed budget amendment. And if I could defer that to Stephen to cover that document.
Stephen, I want to hear what you have to say, but please don't try and confuse me with too many things moving.
Why, what's really, what is your position on cash purchase versus financing? And how does one benefit us over the?
Sure. And I'm going to keep, I'll keep it very simple and then you can drill down as far as you want. The district has a certain amount of money set aside in the capital reserve in the general fund and in the enterprise fund. It's on the last page of what I presented to you guys. Hand out.
Wait, wait, wait. Which, now which document are we looking at now?
Front page is a summary chart. And I do have some copies up here if any.
You understand that I haven't been able to read all of this.
I just, like I said, I'm going to keep it very simple.
Go to the last page.
You have, yes, you have a cash reserve that starts the year at eight hundred and eighty thousand. If you do everything you want to do this year, and that would include financing this purchase, you would only have three hundred and about thirty thousand dollars moving forward to fund whatever you want to fund for capital projects. So the idea is, sure, you could use that money as the partial amount for this, for the building, but then you're going to have to increase your assessments to start recovering this capital reserve. So you got either option here. You can do it. We put it into the budget. You would have the ability to use your cash on hand. If you do that, you're going to run out of cash reserve. And then in order to get the cash reserve, you're going to have to, you know, do some more assessments in order to replenish your cash reserve at a later time because you have projects. You know, your five-year capital plan is very bare right now and you have a lot of other, you know, ideas that you guys have already talked about to put into it. So that's the deal. I mean, it'd be great to be able to use your cash reserve. My preference is always to go start with that. But there's, gets to a point where if you start using up all your cash reserve, you start to lose flexibility.
Ed, I'll let you go, Bill.
I believe, I understand what you're saying. However, I don't accept at face value the fact that we're going to have to increase the assessments next year when the current year assessments for Fund O One went up by almost seventeen percent to fund mostly this building improvement.
Well, they're.
And that amount will stay in the fiscal eighteen numbers.
Well, there's, there's not going to be a guarantee. Don't get me wrong. We're not saying we're guarantee you're going to have to. I'm just telling you based on what's in the budget right now, you know, you would have to if you wanted to increase the reserves, if you want to leave them where they are at. You do have in your current budget about a hundred thousand dollars that you're going to transfer in each year. So if that was sufficient to cover your five-year plan, then you wouldn't have to. You just maintain it.
Do that one again, that last part. What's the hundred thousand you're talking about?
Every year, we try and put a certain amount in our general fund to transfer to the capital project fund to fund future projects. Each year, it's kind of gone down a little bit because the operating budget has had other priorities. So this year, you have a hundred and fourteen thousand. It's already included in these numbers to even get you to your three hundred and thirty thousand. But yes, if your projects for the next five years, you know, are minimal, then no, you would be fine. But if you're expecting to do other projects, then you will have to take a look at that.
Well, let's, okay, let's stop right there for a second. When we adopted the fiscal year seventeen budget, the one we're currently operating in now and almost six months through, we included eight hundred thousand between the O One and four hundred to work on this building.
Correct. Two hundred and forty thousand would come out of the general fund.
If we.
Roughly.
My simplistic logic is if instead spending eight hundred thousand on this building, we spent a good bit of it buying the Girl Scout Building and remodeling that and the rest on this, what's, what's the big difference unless you've got things in your mind that you haven't told me about yet?
Well, the big difference is, is that on your sheet in front of you, to purchase that and everything related brings the price up to over nine hundred thousand. So then even more would have to come out of the general fund. That's the only difference. We put, we budgeted eight hundred thousand total for the project and I believe these numbers are showing.
April, on your sheet, nine hundred and what for the middle column?
On this one?
To purchase it, you're budgeting nine hundred.
This one?
Yes.
So again, I don't want to start to do some circular logic on you. I mean, again, yes, if you really wanted to, you could use your current cash. The concern with that would be it starts to run out and then the bigger picture would be, well, how do you replenish that?
But we didn't think about that when we adopted the fiscal seventeen budget.
Well, and that's part of why you have a budget amendment in front of you because.
Which I also haven't had a chance to look at.
Right. Is that there are other projects that were then added since the budget related to the general fund, like pipe cleaning was an additional amount that wasn't budgeted. Put in a lake bank restoration, another hundred thousand. There's some other items here and I guess, you know, once you start to go through the items, you can decide if you want, if you still want to proceed with those things. But that's part of it is, is that when we did the budget, we expected certain projects to be completed that during the year and there are additional projects that are being requested. And now that's eating up even more of your cash reserves.
Just one more thing. We have a loan outstanding to purchase water meters. We have a loan outstanding or will presumably to do the lake bank restoration. And this would be, and this, I'm sorry, and this would be yet another loan that you're suggesting?
It would be, yes.
Well, I'm, I'm getting cold shivers down my back, I'll tell you the truth. That's all for right now. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
And it's, and we're looking at financing the total amount or just purchase price?
This would be capital cost and soft cost, yes.
Okay, so the full.
So it would be the full, a full total all-in for the project.
So the whole nine eighty?
The whole nine eighty.
I'm sorry, so when we get to the contract drafting, from the standpoint of the financing contingency, what would be the number?
A contingency of what?
For the financing, if we're going to finance it, we need to typically have financing loan contingency in the contract. And what would that number be? We're giving him fifteen now, assuming the number is three seventy for the offer. So is the three fifty-five going to be the borrowing number, the borrowed number for the transaction, the acquisition?
Three fifty is what you're showing.
Yeah. Three fifty would be, you're talking about for the purchase itself?
Yes.
Yeah, there is a, there is a contingency in here.
No, I'm saying.
Here you go playing your hand in public.
Yeah. I don't think we're talking about the same thing.
Okay. In other words, the first discussion is what the board will agree upon what the purchase price would be. If it's three fifty, three seventy, or in that range. In the discussion item, the memorandum recommends an initial deposit refundable of fifteen thousand. So if the offer is three fifty and put fifteen thousand as a deposit, then the three thirty-five would be the financing contingent, the closing is contingent upon obtaining financing for three thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay. And if it's three seventy, then it's three fifty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that.
What kind of a term are we looking at on this?
I've been requesting five years and ten years just to see, I think, five, I think probably ten is going to be. I just wanted, I know what you're going to say.
You wanted to see if I was listening to you, Stephen. That's what you wanted to do.
I wanted at least be able to see what the financial implications of both of those are. You certainly wouldn't want to do less than five, but I understand after five what that means.
What's wrong with, following up on what Bill said, why not make that three fifty, three seventy and give us a little bit of a safety factor and that makes that column then almost one, one million on the nose?
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but you've got, already got contingencies in that line of seventy thousand and another engineering design of seventy-eight.
But I think that's for improvements is what I'm guessing and what they aren't anticipating they're going to run into.
Well, you don't, we don't have to do all of that in this fiscal year. We're halfway through it right now.
Understand, but what they're doing is trying to do this for a bond or a loan. If you're going to be paying cash, you're going to finance all this, correct?
Yeah. Well, no, we don't have to. We'll look at that further.
But we've discussed in the last month or so quite a few other things that lead me to believe the loan five-year is a lot more flexible for us than taking the cash. There's a lot of things on table and talking to Chris, it just doesn't stop.
I mean, there's a risk to having that substantial withdrawal of cash.
And I do understand that. I'm going to come down and Kathy, did you have anything?
I have a lot. I have a lot of concerns. First of all, the math is wrong on this paper. One seventy-five, this one. All right. One seventy-five, nine hundred and eighty dollars, not eighty-one. I know it's only a dollar, but a dollar here and a dollar there. Okay. Oh, well, I'm just, I subtracted and I got nine hundred eighty-three from three is zero. Okay. We're not including that it's going to cost twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars extra every year for the additional cost for the building. That is a lot of money. I did talk to Mr. Bloom about what it would cost. It's at least a thirty-dollar tax increase for all the residents. That to me isn't a lot of money. I did go in the building and I'm questioning that there might be mold in that building because I am.
We had it inspected.
Yeah, but according to Mr. Nelson.
We had it inspected, right?
No, that would be part of our due diligence. So the contract will be contingent on our due diligence and that would be, that would be part of that process.
Because there has been some leaks that have been repaired and when I went in, I felt that I could feel like there was mold. The other thing is I have taken it on myself to do a little bit of asking some of the employees how they felt about moving and they thought it would be not a good, there would be no consistency. They thought it would drive the morale down and they didn't like the idea of having, being in two places. And, you know, where they work together, there wouldn't be any way they could work together. So I mean, you know, we didn't think the factor of employees because this does affect them. Okay? As I said, I walked all around the outside of the building. As you go into the building, there's a concrete and then a tile, okay? And there's a gap of at least a quarter of an inch that really does have to be fixed because it is a dangerous safety issue because somebody would, could accidentally fall. So that's another concern. And I know it says to fix the stucco and there's a price for that, but there is one big, big crack in that building on the outside. There's several minor ones, but there's a big one. Okay. Now I said my piece.
And that was, that's part of the due diligence of an inspection, some of the things that you brought up.
Mark. Point, counterpoint. We've talked about making a lot of changes going forward. If we go back to this building here and go with the alternative of remodeling this building, we've got a plan on replacing that space and that's not in here at all. So column one, as far as I'm concerned, is skewed and really skewed. It's got to be increased substantially to really facilitate what we want to do going forward. We don't have any place to put the equipment if we take half of that building and do that. The other thing is that we haven't talked about and it's got me a little concerned is we've got a easement or a deed issue out here that the property that this building sets on the footprint, at least to the east, is what do we look at, April? Three feet? Three feet outside, I believe, the building.
Quick ways east from where we're.
Right there.
Right.
That way. We don't own the land. It's not our land. That sidewalk, the parking lot, half the grass isn't ours. It's Lee County. Lee County. That makes it very difficult to do much in the way of expanding this building unless you want to put an L-shaped in it or something like that. I just think that the column one is drastically underestimated, which throws you back over to that middle one, notwithstanding what Kathy said. I mean, anytime you get into a construction project or a takeover like that, you're going to run into that stuff. You just check it out and let the chips fall where they may. But I'm totally opposed and building a brand-new building.
Is an odd option.
Yeah, I don't think that's an option. And I haven't worked with any utility where you have what I call administration and public works in the same building. They're always, every city, any town, they're always separated. Administration is not always next to what I call public works or utility people. In fact, usually they don't want to be together.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, Bill.
Would it be, in good order to suggest that we agree to number one, making it top three seventy, leave number two the way it is?
Before you, before you move on with that, I just want to ask Doug if he's got any comments he'd like to make at this time. And then I have one.
No, I'm sorry.
Then we'll go through the list. And I like where you're headed, but did you have any comments?
No, I'll just make, it's really quick. I think we've been looking at facilities, you know, this building, expanding, I think where we're at even today as opposed to where we were last year in our, in our growth and our planning. I mean, I have kind of been for the Girl Scout Building even early on just because I, you know, all the due diligence, all the due diligence that I've done just says that this is just, this is the best decision for us at this particular time. So I'm for it.
And my thought on this is if, if we were to consider not purchasing the Girl Scout Building or if for any reason we come up with some kind of an issue there that would stop us from purchasing the building, if we remodel this building, we have to move people somewhere. It's not like work continues as it is while this building is being remodeled.
And to that point, and Ed's point, I don't know if this eight hundred or the original plan would even be an accepted plan today.
I don't think so either.
I'd say, I wouldn't be in favor of even adopting the old plan. I think we'd have to go back and revise that. It would cost us over a million anyway on the revisions.
So now, Bill, I will, I like where you were headed with your one, two, three, so.
You're referring to the one, two, three on actions, correct?
Yeah. As I indicated earlier, I believe that the not to exceed should be three seventy. I believe that the initial, the items on item number two are satisfactory. Number three has an awful lot of stuff in it. And I guess we can engage legal counsel to draft a contract to allow sixty days for due diligence. But I've seen those contracts are like that and they ought to be able to, you ought to be able to draft that before nightfall. That's, that's no big deal.
They're not difficult to draft.
That's no big deal.
So the timeframe of two twenty-seven is very achievable, yes. By next week, I mean, easy.
How about two seventeen?
Tomorrow?
Well, I'm only being partially facetious. We're taking too darn long to make decisions.
I could have a two twenty-one easily on Tuesday.
Okay, let's, two twenty-one.
Good negotiation.
And I'm working president today.
You've got to do those other things though, Bill.
We've got to do the other things, absolutely. The engineers revise, we got to revise, damn right, we got to revise some of that on three A. I would suggest that we just leave Mr. Bloom to work on other things until we find out whether we can get a deal on this thing or not. I'm, I'm hopeful that a deal is available.
Well, it doesn't have to be in this, necessarily this sequential order. So as soon as we get, you know, the contract approved or at least.
D is critical.
Yeah. Then we can have, we can have Stephen move, but we don't have to, we don't have to put him to work tomorrow. We can kind of wait. And I think that would be the recommendation, Bill, don't you think?
I do.
Yeah, we got to get that due diligence done to know what, what we're in for, for that other three hundred and eighty thousand.
And recognizing that what we're doing is preparing the offer and then it goes to the seller and to see what their reaction is.
Right. And just to understand that I believe we're going to create a contract that's contingent on financing.
Yes.
So therefore Stephen would have to secure that financing in order for us to actually.
Well, he'll see and will provide a timeframe that we agree to apply for financing with X number of days after execution of the agreement, et cetera. Well, he'll see and will provide a timeframe that we agree to apply for financing with X number of days after execution of the agreement, et cetera.
Yeah, so, so I basically just wanted to try to outline anything that we possibly need as management for you to authorize us to move forward so we could get this done. Within that sixty-day period that we're gonna be signing this contract for our due diligence period.
Well, I don't think we have to worry about financing until we know what we've got a deal done. We can pay cash for it if we want to.
Correct.
And we haven't made that decision and a lot of these expenses in the middle column to the tune of about, well, where's my list? A quarter, to a tune of almost a quarter of a million dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand by the way, can be knocked down. That's, there's an awful lot of stuff in that middle column.
First step is secure the building. Second is then we figure out, we pin down exactly what we want to do.
That's right, that's right. We'll authorize the chairman to do whatever she can do and approve the inspection proposal for Fowler. And six, I wouldn't worry about final sale and closing documentation at this time. We've got, we're gonna have to come back on this thing.
That's just telling you, number six is telling you that nothing would be finalized, that would have to come back to the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, for, in essence, we just changed three-fifty to three-seventy?
Right, we're good with everything.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, we're changing four-fifteen to three-seventy.
Four-fifteen.
Four-fifteen, I'm sorry, four-fifteen to three-seventy.
And for purposes of the contract would be the financing would be purchase price less than fifteen over five-year period and what maximum interest rate? Two percent, I think Stephen.
We're not gonna worry about that right now.
Well, we have to put in the, in the contract as part of the contingent, financing contingency. And I think Stephen, you have two, two percent, is that what you're indicating?
We want to do that as maximum.
I've gotten several. You're tying our hands, Tony, when we don't have.
Well, no, but if we're kind of a financing contingency, we have to have numbers assigned to it, the amount, the term, and the rate.
Why?
Otherwise, we have no financing contingency. I mean, otherwise, it's so open-ended. I don't know if you want it not to exceed three percent interest rate or a five-year term. We can't go more than five anyways.
No, I, I probably, the only problem with that is I don't know where the market's gonna be by the time we get to there. So, I mean, you're talking about drafting this next week and then.
You two haven't been hearing what I'm saying.
No, no, sorry, I understand. But, but again, for the purpose of we're gonna have a financing contingency, we can always waive it down the road. When we get to a point in time, you can always waive it, but if the mindset and the approach is to initially have the transaction where it's financed, we need to outline what the financing contingency terms are, the amount, the term, and the rate. If you want to put a not to exceed four percent interest.
That's fine.
Okay.
I could see that.
And you're gonna have this thing all worked out by the twenty-first?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
You'll hear a second?
Well, you put this all as a package, everything you said, just said. Second.
Any other comments, questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Board one.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right. Trust agreement, buy-in between.
Let me see if Mr. Lupides is here.
State revolving loan.
David was going to call in.
I have.
Oh. Well, I'm glad I didn't attack your ancestry while.
You've been having fun listening?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, there are, there are papers on my desk that I hadn't seen before five o'clock, excuse me, three o'clock. That seem to throw a monkey wrench into everything that I had been expecting up to this time. So, I wish that you or Tony or Steve or somebody would bring me back to what is going on.
And I know that when I sat down, all of the additional papers that I had on the desk, it's really very unfair to this board that we continue to have things piled on top of the desk that we're expected to absorb in, you know, ten, fifteen minutes. So, if you, if it's not ready, then let's push it to the next meeting. I don't want, I don't want this anymore and I don't think anybody else is.
What, what are we talking about?
We're talking about this. The stacks of papers.
You mean on the lake improvement project?
No, but the whole, in total, all of the documents that we were expected to read prior to the meeting that we didn't get in a timely fashion.
Okay, I was gonna say, I, some of those didn't bother me, but the, I don't think there's anything new on the construction, lake construction project other than the fact the bids came in high and we were dealing with new numbers. I mean.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
It's just.
You're not dealing with that.
No, no, I'm not talking about any one specific item. It's just if the things aren't ready to get in the book, I think it's not fair to us.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, if I may ask to the items that are in the agenda as items for F, G, and H, I believe the only document that was revised that's in your stack of stuff is the one with the blue and red strike-throughs and additions and that's under four H and.
This is the bond validation stuff.
Right, to the extent we need the bond. And we have a number of documents that squires Patton Bog, David Lupides, and Sandy McClanahan have been working on. We've had numerous conference calls and this is a, the first item is a form, and David, if you want to jump at any time, I don't know, Madam Chairman, can we increase the volume if necessary on that, on that phone?
I can figure it out now.
David?
There we go.
Yes.
Oh, that's much better. Okay, we can hear you now. In, in the agenda book, the meeting book, item four F is a form of a trust agreement. And we do not yet have, and Stephen, I know has had some conversations with various institutions in discussing a trustee. This agreement has not been changed, to my understanding, since we've introduced it into the meeting book.
I'm not aware of any, I'm not aware of any changes since it was submitted. It does have a blank and that blank goes through the document that has the most marks, that does have markup, which is a resolution.
Correct, but.
Still a blank as to who the trust, what bank we were appointing as trustee.
Yes.
And how many dollars?
And, yes, and as a result of the conversation earlier this week, after the bids came in, we have come up with a number to insert in the dollar.
But I guess the first document is, again, the order is, it's a trust agreement, form of a trust agreement, then it's a form of the construction loan agreement with FDEP, then it's a form of a resolution. And to the extent that we have the form of the trust agreement, the reason why a trust agreement is necessary with community development districts in the state of Florida, when you have a borrowing such as this, and you have the validation which is required, you're required to have a trustee. Cities and towns and counties are not required to have a trustee for large, long-term borrowings. Community development districts under chapter one-ninety are. And Stephen, you've had conversations with which entities?
U.S. Bank.
Are they amenable to being trustee?
They're still talking internally about it.
What other institution is possible trustee?
Wells Fargo, we've used before, and some other smaller ones. U.S. Bank is the one that the district used for the water meter program. So, that was kind of why it was, it seemed simply just to use them, but I do not have anything approved yet from their end.
And David, if I misstate anything as far as recommendation to the board, it would be if the board, if we go through this whole process, if the board's amenable to approving the form of the trust agreement in substantially final form and to authorize the chairman and Stephen Bloom to negotiate with the trustee to be the trustee so we can at least insert that and then come back to the board with the terms of that arrangement. Is that, would that be appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, what we need before, before we go in court for the validation, we will need a trustee who has agreed to serve as trustee under that agreement or something similar to it and has to present that name to the court.
And what, what these documents are leading up to is for the borrowing with the SRF loan program, since it's a maturity greater than twenty years, we need to do a validation. And we would ask the court in the validation complaint to validate the borrowing, the construction loan agreement, to validate the trust agreement. And also then validate the assessments. And these documents are sort of the beginning steps along that line. And the resolution basically starts, kickstarts all of that. And again, the revised draft in front of you changes the dollar number and we had a conversation about increasing the maximum borrowing under the validation to twelve-point-five million dollars. It doesn't mean you have to borrow all that much, but the idea is if you're going to validate, validate once. Don't incur that expenditure again. Don't open up the opportunity for any other objections to it. Do it one time. And that the proposed resolution author, also, also authorizes the engagement of Tetra Tech to prepare a requisite engineer's report for the project and to engage the services of AJC Associates as an assessment methodology consultant to prepare a methodology, an assessment methodology, to be validated by the court, which that would be utilized to allocate the borrowing among the benefited properties for the borrowing. And again, this is based upon going one time to the court, getting the court to authorize or validate the borrowing of up to twelve and a half million dollars. And if we borrow less, that's great. If we borrow all of it, that's what the board ultimately has the ability to decide. And what, the, the hope is that we would then come to the board and mark second maybe, if we can accelerate it with a preliminary assessment rule, adopt the preliminary assessment rule instead of hearing for thirty or so days thereafter to adopt the final assessment rule to, for the borrowing. And in between that point in time, we would file the bond validation complaint and, and serve the state attorney, get the state attorney involved in the process, get a hearing date on the order to show cause, what the judge will issue an order to show cause, why the bond should not be issued or validated, and work with the state attorney's office and amend the complaint as necessary once we fill in all the blanks with the assessment and the engineer's report. But this starts that ball rolling. David, do you want anything else to add to that or?
No, I think, I think you probably summarized it fairly well. The only thing I would say is, is that technically, we're not issuing bonds on this. We're incurring indebtedness. But we have to go through the same process to incur indebtedness.
Question?
And it, and it's a statutory requirement that districts have to live with.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney Flurrel, is this resolution specific only to borrowings regarding the state revolving fund and the Lake Bank restoration? It does not apply to any other borrowing?
That's correct, it does not. And it does, it does, I'm not sure if it references the short-term borrowing that will be taken out, but this solely relates to the project being defined as a Lake Bank restoration project.
And, and who was the genius that came up with twelve million, five-hundred thousand dollars?
It was a collective effort.
What we did, Bill, is we took the total footing.
It was based on the, on the, on the linear footage of Lake Bank, it could be worked on?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't done so well on that.
We, we used, we used, we used the unit price that we got of the bid multiplied at times fifty thousand.
On the bid?
Correct.
So, it's, it's up to date as it can be?
It's as upda, up to date as we can get, yeah. Fifty thousand times two-fifty.
And then we added some additional cost, cost of issuance and, and some additional items and figured, again, we started off with a six, we were going to eight. We ended up like eleven and change and then ultimately the consensus of the group that we had to call was twelve and a half million to, once again, that's the ceiling for, that we're validating.
It's a number. It's the best number we got.
Doesn't sound like accountants to me, but that's all right.
Stephen was in on the call.
Stephen was in on the call.
During your first six million, you don't want to have to come back again.
And do this again.
I understand that, but our first six million is gonna be more than six million if these, if this three went to four-point-four, is it not? And that's the point.
That's a good, good observation. That's why I went to twelve and a half million.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was a scary increase.
No more questions, I hope. Nobody's putting this in the newspaper.
I, I think that the timing that every, we've got to get worked out also is that we have like three avenues we're going down right now. One avenue on the bond validation, another avenue on getting the interim line of credit to finance it because we're not gonna have the SRF loan closed until June. Then the other issue is accepting the bids and giving a tentative award of contract. So, we have three things that are going.
And they're not, they're not all as easy as this. This is, this is.
It's a cupcake.
This is a cupcake compared to the other one.
That's correct.
Kathy?
No questions.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Tony asked, Tony asked a question a moment ago as to whether or not this resolution addressed the short-term bank borrowing. And I, I, I need to answer that or should answer that.
Okay.
And the answer is no because the short-term borrowing, maturity of less than five years are exempt from the validation requirement. So, we can ignore, we're ignoring it in this resolution.
Just trying to make sure that was clear.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
But I think in terms of cost of our participation in that, I think we have covered that with Tony on the fee. So, I think.
And David, I don't know if there's any particular order or if we can do them all at one time, but the board is so inclined to approve the adoption, and I don't have the next resolution number, but the resolution authorizing the occurrence of not to exceed twelve-point-five million dollars aggregate principal amount of district indebtedness in the form of one or more borrowings from the state of Florida DEP under its SRF program. And the revisions to that resolution that we addressed were that we added that special assessments would be pledged to repayment, would authorize retention of AJC Associates as assessment methodology consultant, authorize retention of Tetra Tech to repair the requisite engineer's report. If the board's inclined to adopt that resolution, subject to confirmation of a trustee and.
I think probably we need to address the trustee, the blank there, and I think we should just ask the board to authorize the chair in consultation with the district manager to approve a trustee.
U.S. Bank or, want to give alternatives, U.S. Bank or Wells Fargo?
Wells Fargo.
You may, may want to include a couple of others that are in the business. Regions is in the, and I don't know which ones you do business with, but Regions is in the, in the business. And the bank that we did that bank deal with.
Iberia?
Yeah, Iberia.
Well, I think, once again, we can just say latitude of, you know, of a trustee, it can be either U.S. Bank, Wells Fargo, Iberia, Regions Bank.
That's fine with me.
So, so we're making the motion with that proviso?
Yes.
We haven't, we haven't talked about the dollar amount yet.
Yeah, twelve and a half million.
No, the trustee's fees.
We're talking about the trust agreement now, are we not?
Correct.
You haven't told me about the dollar amount.
Since we don't have the trustee, we don't know what the, the fee will be. That'll be recurring fee typically, I guess, Stephen, correct?
That's correct.
No, well, then.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, let me make.
It's a, it's the district loan.
On the cost breakdown I paid prepared, Stephen, is, are we missing a line item then called trustee fee?
Well, the trustee fee is more like it's an annual operating cost to, to manage the loan. It's not really like a one-time.
Oh, okay, so it's not a reimbursable expense then on the SRF? Okay.
What is that typically?
Yeah, ballpark.
Five, between five and ten.
They may have an acceptance fee.
Yeah, I mean, between five and ten, but it's, it's not that much.
Five and ten thousand a year?
Yeah, closer to five, but it usually depends upon the size and.
Okay. But, but again, not a reimbursable expense?
No.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll go back. Is that the only item that we?
It should be a re, it should, that should be a reimbursable expense. It's a trustee, it's part of the financing cost.
No, we're talking about SRF reimbursable, David versus the bond, the financing.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'll go ahead and make that motion then, subject to the selection of the trustee.
Question on the motion. You haven't told me what dollar amount is gonna be in the, in the trust agreement that you've made the motion to approve.
Twelve and a half million. That we're, we're raising the bar to twelve and a half so that we don't have to do this again, hopefully.
I thought we were raising the bar on, on the, on the court.
That'll be the same number.
Yeah.
Ah, well. You could have saved me a lot of gray here if you'd have told me.
Well, I see what the chairman, David, what the chairman is indicating, that on the, on the trust agreement, on the first page, it relates to the blank dollar Gateway Services Community Development District loan from the state, State Revolving Fund Loan Program. We have no number for that. And what would that in the maximum number be, I guess?
Uh.
I think that's what the chairman's indicating.
Would that at this time be the four million, three seventeen?
But the total we're going to borrow ultimately would be how much?
Right. Now, we have an approval for six million. We just raised it, though, to on this first Tyler, what, four? No, they told us anything, up to the six million. That's what we've got approved right now. So we could go to six million, but I don't know why you would, four, three seventeen, unless you wanted more contingency.
Wait a minute. Can we talk about one thing at a time?
Yeah.
Are we going to talk about the trust agreement or talking about the bank validation?
I was talking about, my motion was on the.
Court validation.
The resolution.
The validation. Yeah.
Twelve million, five.
Correct.
I'll second that.
So we're talking about?
Yes, the bond validation.
The resolution to initiate the process.
I wanted to make sure we are all on the same page.
Do I help you? Do I help?
Yes, sir.
I thought that's what we were talking about, but now I'm puzzled.
Well, I thought we were starting off.
It's a resolution twenty seventeen something.
Something.
We don't know the number.
I know.
That's, that's the motion, and Bill seconded.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about resolution number twenty seventeen something?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I think the next one is, the next one is the trust agreement, and just looking at it, the way it's relating to Gateway Services Community Development District loan from the state of Florida, the, let's ask David, is this referencing this first five ponds project at which we've identified a cost to the bank for the line of credit, four point four million, our cost estimate's four million, three seventeen? Is that the number that would be applicable to go into that blank?
Or, David, is it the entire project, which is estimated to be much higher?
Yes. Which, which one is that on the trust agreement?
On the trust agreement, I would suggest that we put the twelve five, so we have it, we have a trust agreement.
So they're together.
We don't have to redo it.
Good.
For the future borrowing. On the loan agreement, I think, I think the resolution anticipates that we would have multiple borrowings.
Correct.
And so I think that would be more specific to the, to the deal that you got on the table through the department.
That makes sense. I'd make that motion then.
Question on the motion. Does the bank unnamed currently, are they going to be charging us on the twelve million, five, or as opposed to three million or six million?
They charge on the bonds that are out, or yet that's outstanding.
Yeah, the loan, as you borrow it.
All right. And if we're, if we're, if we're borrowing and then we're paying, then the, then the amount is calculated on the lower amount? Am I correct about that?
Our, our board is already, this is the confusion we had the other day when we were talking. Our board has approved, or your board before, approved a principal and interest payment based upon six million dollars that we had to have to satisfy SRF to get the six million dollars of about, what, three forty, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year PNI. We had that in the budget right now, and that'll be an annual payment we do for twenty years for up to six million of borrowing, which is what we have right now in approved for the original facility plan. If we go back for ponds sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, whatever, and we have to go over six million, we get another loan from SRF.
I think maybe Mr. Guy is asking is that if we actually borrow six, we pay it down to four, are the fees based upon the four outstanding?
Yeah, like a line of credit.
Yeah. The trustee, Stephen, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The trust agreement, the trustees?
Yeah, it's going to be based off of the four point four.
Yeah. What we actually borrow.
You're talking about will they adjust it each year?
Well, I mean, actually, we anticipate that the trustee and the disagreement will go away much sooner than it does in your bond deals. In the bond deals, trustee hangs around until the last bond is paid off. On this, on this transaction, because it's not a bond deal, it's a borrowing from the state DEP, and the only thing we need the trustee there is the disbursement of money from the, as it's received from the state. The trustee goes away when all the money has been advanced into the line.
Yes, I know. The, the state requires under paragraph, whatever it is, to have a, to have a bank trustee. All right. But the question remains, what number are you going to put in this?
Twelve, for the trust agreement, twelve and a half million. So then it lines up with the bond validation agreement.
So it may line up to the nine bank validation agreement, but it isn't going to line up to anything with the SRF. And if the SRF requirements that, that make us have a trustee, and I think you're going to have some.
No, SRF doesn't require it. It's a separate provision in chapter one ninety and chapter seventy-five Florida statutes that require it.
Well, I may be technically correct, incorrect, but I read this all again this morning, and I have made a notation that paragraph three oh four, three point oh four of the State Revolving Fund requires a trustee bank, a bank trustee, and that's why we're doing it, I thought.
Yeah.
Is that so, sir?
But at the same time, sir, the, the documents are set up that they contemplate one or more, one or more borrowings from the state. And so, and so it's not, we're not anticipating going out for twelve and a half million from the state on day one. What we're doing is borrowing, going back to the state.
It's phased.
No, David, I think Mr. Guy is reading is the, the draft construction loan agreement with SRF. It's on our agenda, page one forty six.
Let me jump there.
Yeah. It's, it's the agreement between DEP and the district that in section of article three point oh four says all the assets and all accounts credited under this loan agreement held in trust for the purposes, but that's different than the bank as trustee for the validation purposes and for the borrowing.
Different deal.
This is just for the, just for the validation? You need a trustee just for a validation?
In the Florida law of CDDs, yes.
So we're going to have a trustee for the validation and another trustee?
It'll be the same trustee.
Same trustee.
I'm sorry, David, you were saying?
At the point, at the point in time that we validate, there will be no money to spend dispersed. It'll be held by a trustee. So.
I sure am glad you guys know what you're doing.
Well, the, the way we're going, though, David, is that since we will not have the loan approved, we're going to be working off that line of credit and probably go almost clear up to the four million, three seventeen. And when we make a SRF draw, a first payment request, it probably will be for almost some substance, the whole, whole deal. One-time shot.
Yeah. Let's not talk about that number just yet, because we're going to have, we're going to have a conversation about that later on.
But my point is that is, right now, is assuming that the loan would be approved in, by SRF in June, that works out with our timing, time schedule, such that we're going to be borrowing from the line of credit to make all the payments to the contractor and then ask or seek reimbursement for the state, probably with one shot, maybe two.
And, and, and when we request the money from the state, one or two shots, that will flow through the loan debt service account.
Correct.
At that point in time, the money from the bank on the, on the line of credit from the bank will not flow through that.
Yeah, that money is, I understand it, that money for the state, when we receive, seek that reimbursement, that will come to us, and then we have to pass it on to the bank to pay them off.
Yeah.
The line of credit.
So on page one fifteen, we don't know who the trustee is, so we're going to plug in twelve and a half million.
That's correct. So it's to line those two up is what David's suggesting.
Right. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that. We just don't know who our trustee is yet.
That's, that's correct.
So if you will repeat your motion for a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the trust agreement, filling in the blank relating to blank dollars. Fill that in as twelve and a half million.
With the trustee?
With the trustee be the same as on the bond validation to be determined.
I'll second.
Okay. Do we need to say it needs to be one of the four bank names that we had mentioned earlier?
I think you.
I would say yes, just to be consistent.
Well, then, do we need to enumerate those then? Bank, bank? Go ahead.
Wells Fargo, Iberia, and then mention Regions.
Okay.
Regions?
Regions. Okay. Correct. Motion to include those four.
In substantially final form, subject to any revisions that might need to be made.
Correct.
And you agree with that as a second?
The second juror agrees.
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Any more?
Just, I want to ask before I call the vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chairman, the last document is asking the board to approve in substantially final form, subject to, again, insertion of various dates and the actual dollar amounts and any other terms that FDEP may wish us to change. This is based upon, I think, David, the form of agreement from the two thousand sixteen transaction with SRF?
I, I don't know which transaction this came from.
I think that's what Sandy may have used, and approve this in substantially final form with the ability for the chair with the assistance of the manager and staff and counsel to make any revisions as required by FDEP, which will, some of them may come back to you, but this helps, again, helps us begin the validation process.
Kathy, any questions? Phil, any questions on this?
I'm just, I'm just trying to get my head together. May I have a moment, Madam Chairman?
Doug, if you have any questions on this side of it?
Yeah.
Ed?
Yep.
So back to you, Bill.
Back to me. Mr. Attorney, what exactly does this resolution provide?
This document, this agreement? This is a standard form of loan agreement between the state and would be the district, based upon prior forms of the loan agreement with regards to the warranties, representations, the audit requirements, establishing the debt service accounts and a number, anything, the closeouts, dispersments, the project information, all associated with this SRF loan.
And this, this is, I know that the Department of Environmental Protection is the one that really runs this thing for the state, but sooner or later, we're going to have to discuss the dollar amount.
Yes, sir.
This is the agreement, Bill, that we would have done had we not been subject to one ninety and all this other stuff is superfluous. We wouldn't have been doing it.
No, we're down, we're down.
We're down to the world meat potatoes of what we're trying to do, and that's to get to secure the SRF loan.
I read this one also this morning, and after the conversation we just had a little bit ago, I, my mind.
And there's minimum flexibility, I imagine, in changing this. This is a state form.
There's, in one of these, in one of these documents, there is a warranty, a representation by us, that we have the ability to repay this thing.
We already did that. You guys did that last year when you accepted that six million dollar loan, and they, they made you put that into your assessment methodology for the year.
But, but the assessment that we put in was for three million.
Six million.
For fiscal seventeen.
Six million.
Three million.
The financing was for six, I believe.
Well, maybe the financing was for six, but the assessment for fiscal seventeen is three.
Six million, six million.
You're on page three, I think, Mr. Guy. It starts off with the article two, warranties, representations, and covenants.
Yes.
I think your, Bill, I think your principal and interest factor for the six million equals what you put in the budget for the, they wanted to see that you'd taken that action, even knowing that you weren't going to spend that whole amount. They didn't know that, and we didn't know that at that time.
Can I see your budget a minute, please, Karen?
Sure.
I don't know what the.
I guess the other.
Stephen, is that correct?
That's correct.
The other thing to take in, take into consideration is that we are starting an assessment proceeding, hopefully at the next meeting, in which, in which the district will levy assessments that will cover the entire debt, principal and interest over twenty or thirty.
Are you talking about the cost of this project, David, or are you talking about the six million that we have dedicated?
I think the six million will be.
It's right here.
That's what I thought, and I think we've already done that. That's what we were talking about the other day, and we were just talking about the semantics of the name.
Debt service versus non-hem.
Madam Chairman, Kathy and I've got the budget up here for fiscal seventeen.
Yep.
And three million is the number that two of us are looking at, and three and three doesn't equal six, even though there are two of us looking at it.
I think you're missing the total other financing sources down.
That's right, and, and that, and those other financing sources with state SRF, were they not, Steve?
But, but, but on the, on the other hand, you're, you're, the amount of, the amount of your borrowing in this fiscal year, which ends, what, September thirtieth?
Yes.
I mean, if we close in June, the only debt service that you will have in this fiscal year would probably, would be the interest from June until September thirtieth.
Correct.
Well, I understand, I understand that concept, but my experience is that they want to know that we have levied the assessment to provide for the repayment of this debt. And we've only levied it for the three million.
That's what the new assessment.
Yes.
Okay. So I, I put the budget up here on the screen. Basically, when we did the budget, at that time, it was a six million dollar loan that we were going to spend in two years. So your budget shows that year one, you're going to spend three million dollars.
Right.
Your, your assessments and your principal and interest payments are showing the full six million dollars, because the state revolving loan requires you have the, show the ability to pay off the loan amount, and that's six million. So that's when you, when you look at your top number there, four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-five, which is the gross assessment, and then you see your principal and interest payment of three forty-three, six twenty-four, that's based off of a six million dollar loan over twenty years at, I think.
Two percent.
Around two percent.
Okay, so that's, that is assuming that that assessment is going to continue for twenty years.
Correct. This amount, yes. Now, again, this is a budget, and then we're going to be, we're going to be doing the assessment methodology, and obviously, you know, things will change. You know, nothing's been really approved, other than this assessment amount that you see in front of you. But per the state revolving loan, just like you just mentioned a couple minutes ago, you do need to be able to show that you are going to be able to repay this loan before they will approve it. And that's, that's why you have the amounts in front of you.
That's why you did what you did.
Yes.
Okay, but I just want to make sure that I understand. We are guaranteeing to the state that this amount of special assessment levy is going to continue for twenty years.
And, and that would be.
Is that so, yes or no?
This, yes, and that would be a part of the assessment methodology that you just approved.
And it may be a different number.
It may be a different number, but yes, absolutely. What you're saying is correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
You okay?
Yes.
I know where he's headed. We haven't got to the hard question yet.
This is all a cupcake.
Is, are, are we then needing a motion?
Yes, to approve the form of the agreement, substantially final form.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any other comments or questions from anybody? Okay, I'll call the questions.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I didn't hear any.
No.
What's next? We've got to get, now we've got to get down to the real meeting.
That was, that was the easy stuff.
That was the easy stuff.
Aye is the bridge loan.
What happened there was is that when the bids came in, we recalculated the total project cost breakdown that you have in front of you. That's the $4,317. And even that's got an asterisk on it, because I have not gotten final confirmation of the bond council. The line of credit construction interest according to, we're still waiting on the state to come back and tell us whether or not that is a reimbursable SRF expense. That's up in the air. But somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,317, with a construction contingency allowance of 5%, includes materials cost and all four ponds, or all five ponds based upon the low bidder. If you recall, we had the original line of credit set at $3,050, I believe, was the number. And Stephen, in a last-minute hustle, got to our bank and got that raised to 4.4 million to cover the total estimated cost of the project. So I kind, that's kind of where we're at now, I guess, is to have a discussion that you all received a copy of the bid tabulations. It's that little multi-colored form.
Yeah.
That shows the numbers. At this point in time, I guess the issue is, is that either Tyler or Danny want to make any comments or presentation of a recommendation of a word of contract, tentative award of contract. That would be probably the next logical step. Is that correct, Tony?
Contracts, plural.
Contracts, plural.
Yes.
I have to say, when I saw this number, it gave me indigestion.
Should have been here at bid opening. Should have been here at bid opening. I think, I had Danny and Tyler talk, but I think the reality is, is that we found out one thing on this. We sure as the dickens picked the four tough lakes. They're hard, they're very difficult, they're very difficult. The two we're talking about, they're big, is 116, 126. They're tough projects, they are very tough projects.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to appear ungrateful, but is it possible that we messed up our estimates?
It's possible. It's always possible.
I mean, what I'm saying, is this going to, is this going to follow us all through the?
Well, we would hope not, Bill, because the original ponds, the test ponds, 104, 106, 7, 6, 7, and 8, you had accessibility out the wazoo. You could get in there and get materials in there. These, they're tough, they're really tough. When you were asking about the $12,500, while ago, took the $50,000 and applied this bid price per unit foot of about $250 per pond, and that was, when we were originally talking, what, 137, 138, 140, somewhere in that ballpark, was the, the going price. So that's, I think we're just seeing the reality of what it takes to, to do this work. It's, it's tough work. Now, the question is, we have a couple of choices. One, we turn down the bids in one or all five of those, and re-advertise them. That's issue one we could do. Or two, we take these bids, or we take combination of keeping some and selecting the others. My problem as a board member, and I've been in this position, one is on the other side of the fence where Tyler and Danny are at, is what is the guarantee that you're going to get somebody else to come in and bid it?
What's the guarantee, Tyler?
No such thing as a guarantee in life, sir.
No guarantee.
So, I mean, like Ed said, you know, the, the construction pricing came in about 20 to 25% higher than what we were anticipating to come in. Now, there's a lot of soft costs in there also that jacks the price up to what you see, which is the 4.3 number. Validation fees, other stuff that we didn't really include, and at least my original thought about it when we had that $3 million figure. So, I mean, as far as the, the construction dollars, they're high. I mean, there's, there's various reasons of why they are 20 to 25% higher. You know, like Ed said, there's a reason you're doing these five lakes first. These are the five worst lakes that you had, that we went out and found and said, these are your worst five, these are what we should do first. So, I don't think it's necessarily unexpected that they might be a little bit higher than what we used for, I guess, the average number, if that makes sense.
Is, is, are these doing like the platinum repair on all four sides? Have we actually looked at these and, and we know what they really need, and maybe they don't need, you know, the, the gold, platinum?
So, this is, so just to clarify, this is still not doing any Gulf Core Side or Wetland or anything like that. This is just a residential component of these lakes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
So, that's what we're doing. As far as can we do different things on these lakes to save money? Yeah, I'm sure that you could. I'm sure we could go back and do, you know, ask the contractor to give us a change order proposal to do, you know, different areas with different materials, or, you know, potentially not do an area, potentially just do, you know, just re-grading an area. I, I don't know how much you would end up saving on that. I think for the two big lakes, 116 and 126 in particular, a lot of the reason that cost is high is simply because there's absolutely no way to get to it. And the contractor that bid it is, he's got basically one access point, and he's got to dump a bunch of barges in the lake and do the whole work by barge, which is good for the residents in a sense that, you know, you're not going to be going through their side yards, cutting down the trees and all that sort of stuff. But, I mean, it comes at a premium cost. So, yeah, there's probably some things we could do to potentially save some money on those, but just the nature of those particular lakes, I don't know how much savings you would realize. I mean, it's definitely something we can look into, and it's definitely something we can talk to the contractors about.
Okay.
And this is for either Tyler, or Ed, or Danny, whoever wants to answer. So unfortunately, when, when I look through these bids, there's not one contractor that has a bid on all the lakes. I mean, the, there's one that has, you know, probably all but one. There's one that has two, and another one that has two, somewhere around there. I mean, what I was hoping is that if we could find one that bid all five, we would actually look to maybe do some value engineering, if there was any opportunity. And, and I don't know if there is opportunity to value engineer and have some incentives as they go through, maybe have some, some methodology or some, some improvement as they go along to maybe, again, shave some costs off as they, as they go through. But I don't know, I mean, that wouldn't be the case if we have multiple, multiple contracts.
That's, that's correct. But my, my fear is right now, we got two, two lakes, 116, 126, pretty well tail wagging the dog. Those are big bucks, right there, those two lakes. We put this thing out, we publicly advertised it, and we got what we got. My fear is, is that if we put it back out, delay it, massage it, do whatever you want to it, and we only get one bidder back, the number could go up.
What have you gained?
You, you might, you might lose another quarter of a million dollars with a higher bid, which you gain. It, it's just, it's a risk, it's a big risk. If we had contractors standing outside the door saying, hey, rebid it, we'll bid, I don't even know if I'd go with that, because there's no guarantee.
Yeah, and, you know, we, at the pre-bid, so we had a total of, what, I think it's six contractors.
Six or seven.
We only got three that actually submitted bids, and there's various reasons for that. Some, some were just flat out, they said, look, we're too busy, I'm sorry, we can't do it. You know, some just were scared about, hey, you know, we don't think we can do it in this timeframe, and there's not a real good way to get to these things, and, and they're just hard. So, my hope and my expectation moving forward from this is that once you get into your Phase Two, Phase Three lakes, that some of the rest really aren't comparable to these lakes. They're, they're, they're much easier to get to, they're much easier to access. You're not going to have to truck in as much dirt. I mean, I really believe that these five lakes are probably your worst ones, and that's, that's why we did them. So, I don't want to guarantee to you in the future that's going to get cheaper, but, I mean, I think I expect that moving forward, I think some of the lakes in the future might not be as difficult to work on.
Go ahead.
Tyler, I know that these five are Phase One, but we've got Phase Two and Three, as I recall. If we have to pay the same dollar per lineal foot on Phase Two and Phase Three, what's our $6 million come to?
Twelve and a half million. Not counting soft costs.
And this is only the first part of Phase One, right?
Right.
Five out of thirteen.
Yeah, there's still seven more lakes?
Eight.
Eight more lakes in Phase One.
So this is, I want to say rough numbers, like 17,000 linear feet a lake. So, a little over three miles a lake. The twelve and a half million figure was somewhat up, hold that number, but there, there was some little bit of thought that, okay, if we have 50,000 feet a lake, that 50,000 feet is essentially, I think, how we came up with that number. So, you know, again, this is the first five lakes of Phase One. I, I think you're right, I think there was another eight. I don't remember how many feet that adds up to, but I think 50,000 feet was the end game, of which this is 17, I want to say it's like 17,000 linear feet.
So you're telling us we're not, you're telling us we're not going to be able to complete all of the lakes that we had originally planned on for the $6 million, is that right?
That's correct.
That, that is correct, sir. And the $6 million was not intended to originally cover that.
Would have been fine if it had been for Margaret.
That 50,000 feet. I don't think we were planning on getting 50,000 feet with, with $6 million bucks originally.
No, 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 no. It was, was these ponds plus the other, it was like 18,000 or something like that. It was about a third of the total 50,000.
Right, so I don't want to totally, you know, say, hey, we weren't even close. We, you know, five turned into twelve and a half, that's, that's maybe a little bit misleading, but I guess, so the 50,000 linear feet was never going to get done for the $5 million. 50,000 feet was the end game, that was, that was it.
Down the road.
Right, so your immediate need was this first 17,000, which I think we said, we thought was going to be somewhere around three or three and a half. Total numbers added up apparently comes up to 4.3, so that's, that's where we're at.
So, I, I think the conversation that we need to have is, I mean, again, I don't want to delay, I don't want to cause any delays, because these lakes need work. But the question is, do we have an appetite to continue to do the level of reconstruction that we originally have committed to, knowing that these prices are, that it's going exponentially higher than what we had anticipated and estimated? So, I mean, if it was me, I would, I mean, I would look for our engineers and Ed to say, okay, so maybe we picked, I think, probably a Cadillac version with the Armor Tech and, and some of the things. Do we need to go back and revise that will get us through? I don't know what the, what's the, what do we anticipate these revisions? How long would it get us?
Um, what do you mean, I'm sorry?
So, if we put down the Armor Mac, I think, Armor Mac, Armor Tech, I can't remember.
Armor Max.
Armor Max. If we put that down, it gives us, let's just say, a potential shelf life of how long?
Oh, how many years we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I mean, I think realistically, a, a lot of it is environmentally specific for lakes.
And I know that there's, there's.
You know, rough numbers, take 20 years, 20 to 30 years.
Okay.
That's the goal.
And again, we can, we could lay dirt and re-grade that area, and put some stuff down, and do that over every five years.
Would be more often.
For, I mean, you know, this is starting to be very concerning for me.
Oh, yeah.
The dollar amount. And I'm sure everyone up here, and again, exactly, and I want to do the right thing. And I think everyone up here does.
Now you, now you refresh your memory, go back two years ago when we started talking to you, and I came to a meeting and I told you 15 to 20 million?
Yeah.
Now you know why.
I know what you're saying about we could just, you know, add soil and re-grading.
I don't know, that's not the right path, and I'm not saying that.
Because you're, you would be looking at redoing that every year or two.
I know.
Heading ponds of rain and weather.
I'm just saying, is there, I don't know, is there any other option at this point?
Well, just to give you some, I don't know, relief on it. If you take Pond 87, take the low bid of $158,000 divided by 1721, that's only $95 per lineal foot. So we've got a range, and I think it's showing what Tyler just said. We've got a range of $95 a foot versus what we had installed over here, somewhere around $130, $135 a foot, all the way up to $280 a foot. And what I think I, you see is the degree of difficulty coming in. I'm hoping that the ponds down the road, and when we authorize these guys to go on ahead and take the next eight ponds, which was what we had selected to do, we'll see bids that on the unit price basis drop down. If they don't, we might have to go to Plan B.
Yeah, well, I mean, what's concerning is, you know, there's two bids in the first.
What's Plan B?
Is right in line.
Change the design.
They're very close.
Change the design.
You go to, you go to the second one, and one, one's almost double the other. And when you get that kind of variation, that bothers.
Welcome, welcome to the world of engineering.
Yeah, and I mean, that, so Lake 87, I mean, the reason why you're seeing the low bid and then the next low bid was, I mean, the different ways that that contractor proposed to do that work. I think one was going to do a barge, one was going to do it by land. And that's the reason why you're getting that different cost.
Right, so that's the one you were saying, the barge versus?
Right, so the one bidder, you know, Met Tower, the lakes that they, they could do or that they bid on, the reason they only did two was because that was all their bonding capacity would allow them to do. So, there's.
Had a ton, or?
Their bonding.
Their bonding capacity, couldn't give us a bond anyhow.
Right, so they, they just couldn't, I mean, they could work-wise, I suppose, do all of them, but for bonding reasons, they didn't have the bonding capacity to bid all five lakes.
Tyler, were all three of these on our, what do we call, pre-qualified list?
No, I don't know if Met Tower, I don't think Met Tower was on the pre-qualified list.
So Met Tower came in, but TSI and Metro were on our pre-qualified list.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I mean, to answer your question, is there different things you can do in the future, or is this the Cadillac program? I mean, I don't know, maybe this is like the Toyota program, I guess. I mean, I don't know if you're all the way there.
We're bronze.
I mean, you're like a, you're like a solid silver.
Silver, solid silver.
But I mean, yeah, there's, there's cheaper methods to do. There's, there's other, there's other methods to do for sure. There.
I know we talked about that, they won't last good.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's, I mean, there's geotubes, there's this deal that Lake and Wetlands does with the Pine Straw deal, which I don't really even fully understand. There's, there's a lot of options out there, and there's, there's cheaper options for sure. You know, when we talked about this a year, two years ago, whenever it was, you know, there was a lot of concern from residents about, you know, hey, I don't want to see that geotube in my backyard. You know, I think the consensus at that time was a lot of people were willing to pay more because they, they wanted that different aesthetic look, you know?
Did you hear the man that came to the podium earlier today?
Yes, sir.
He's one.
He's, because he's got a neighbor that's got this design, a former board member. He lives right around the corner. I'm telling you, a lot of people saw that, and they think, well, same thing over in Palio Reserve. They all see that, and that's what they expect they're, they're going to get.
Sure, so I mean, yeah, there's cheaper options. And if you want to, us to look into those further, and you want to get bids on one of those options maybe, and maybe pilot it, you can absolutely do that.
Well, I think what, what I got from what you said is, even if we went with a less expensive product, we're still going to be paying a lot of money for them to just get it.
That's the problem.
That, the, the ability to actually get to the lake, lake banks isn't going to change.
So material, material cost is not.
Yeah, 10%.
It's not a primary driver of.
10%.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, I get it.
For sure, I mean, so those two lakes, 126 and 116, are, are special cases, and they're hard to get to. And yeah, even if you went with a cheaper material, I mean, I still think the cost would be high, maybe not as high, but it would still be high just because.
I think we're just getting sticker shot.
Yeah, and I think, because I know that we have a lot of lakes in the community that aren't going to be as difficult to get to the lake banks. There's staging areas, and there's plenty of easements where people haven't planted lots of stuff in them. So I know that we won't run into this issue on every lake.
And, and, go ahead, Bill.
If we approve these five with all of these extraneous costs on Page One, does that limit this to a million seven total for the second go-around?
Um, no, sir.
That's $6 million.
There, so you can, in my conversations with the folks at DEP, you can increase your amount that you've requested. They, you do have to get it approved, but there is a possibility to increase the amount that you've requested. And.
Underline possibility?
Danny's not throwing anything at me, so I think that's right.
He wants to get you in person.
For the record, Danny Nelson, Tetra Tech. Now, the, when DEP looks at the facilities plan, they look at the plan, they don't, they look at the dollars. But they understand that, you know, things change and you can't control bids, so that should not be an issue. As long as they have the dollars to fund the project, those dollars will go up. You would have to, you may have to resubmit the request for inclusion form to increase that dollar amount. In fact, I know you would have to do that, but as far as, as long as the dollars are there.
They're at the state?
They're at the state level. They're at the state level, and they have, they've, I haven't seen a case yet where the dollars haven't been available, so. Uh, to get to, kind of go back to some of your comments, Doug, yeah, it definitely would, is more challenging on these, these two lakes, you know, specifically. And, and as Tyler mentioned, these are, these were picked because these are the worst. Um, I think, you know, two things that may have also, um, you know, added to the cost in addition to the access, you know, as Tyler mentioned, people are busy, it's supply and demand, but also we have a limited window to get work done. As we move forward, the next public hearing for DEP is going to be July or August, they, they'll set that date, there's always one in January or February, there's always one in July or August. Um, our goal would be to get the next package to DEP, and that would be up to, to this board, do we want to do, you know, three, four, five, or the rest of the, or the rest of the lakes? And I think that will help a lot because you'll be able to bid, um, you know, in August, September, so you'll have a, a lot longer period of time that the contractors will have to be able to perform the work. So rather than performing it over a, a two, two and a half, three month period, they'll have a longer period of time, and definitely.
My question. You said you've, you've dodged my question.
I do, I do a very good job of dodging questions.
He was trying.
But we're going to be limited to a million seven on our next go-around.
No, I don't, I don't see that at all, no.
Well, then we're going to have to increase the assessment.
You would have to, you would have to make a modification.
And we've already increased the assessment seven, almost seventeen percent in fiscal seventeen.
If, if I might make a suggestion, I think you do have two, possibly three, that are in line with, with where we were looking at. I would, I would definitely award those, and then if, to defer the others, we can go back and look at, at other methods. You know, we know that they're challenging access, but I know we could do that, but I wouldn't want to lose, um, you know, at least the two low, and, and really the three low, I wouldn't want to lose, and then the others could be reevaluated, and certainly moving forward, if we stick with the Armor Max, which I would certainly hope we, we stuck with that, and I've mentioned this to the board before, is I think we have a lot more flexibility moving forward, where the extent of erosion is, is a lot less, where we can then alternate with the coconut matting and, and that sort of material, we don't have the luxury as much with these, with these, but I would not be opposed at all if, if, if this, if this board wanted to approve, you know, just those two or three. Gets us a little bit behind the eight ball, but we are moving forward, and I think it, it, it probably makes it a little more palatable.
So, and if I go.
Well, the one thing I was going to say is, is that, what complicates this is that we're dealing with a federal funding source. We can't negotiate ahead of the award of contract, that, it's not like if this were just a, a private deal.
And we can't negotiate the wage rate.
We can't, we can't negotiate any of that, so if we would want to do something like that, you roll the dice, award the contract, then if you want to go back to the contractor and try to negotiate a change order for whatever, you can do that. But right now, you have to award the contract based upon the way it was, you don't have much latitude there.
Well, I understand that, but I'm, I'm getting indigestion already for what our budget process is going to look like for fiscal eighteen.
I understand, I understand.
And when I look, when I look at these, the, the first, you know, Lake eighty-six, those bids are pretty competitive, so, uh, they're close. So I think that's, we could pick one there, the second one, I mean, I'm almost looking at the highlighted ones, and, did you do that, Ed?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm looking through, and, and, I mean, at least that, if we do decide to go, that is the right path.
The highlighted ones are, if, by definition, at this point in time, the low responsive responsible bidders.
Thank you, I was going to ask that, the engineers indicated that all the bidders were responsible, competent, qualified bidders, and the yellow ones are indicated as being the lowest, most responsive responsible bid.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, you did on the record.
I, I don't know what else.
Those two off of my list.
I, I don't know.
And that's the total, that's the three, four, three point four.
Correct.
So we've got, for these five lakes, we've got two companies.
Correct, well, there's, there's three, but this one over here only.
Well, they didn't check.
One bidder, one bidder, one contractor has three lakes, one contractor has two lakes.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm getting to a different point.
Five lakes, two contractors.
Got it. I got it.
There's, there's five lakes.
It's not my question.
You answered the other question, Doug.
So they're going to be working simultaneously, what are our chances of actually getting all of this work done before rainy season kicks in on these five lakes?
Well.
That's the, because the people that know that these five lakes are up to be worked on, that's what they're going to want to know.
Well, there's good news, here's the good news.
I love how Danny made you answer that question.
I think if I were you, I know what you're going to say, I'd say there's just news, I don't know if it's good news.
It's good news, uh, they, so they're contractually obligated to complete those lakes within ninety days of their issuance of those proceeds. If they do not complete them, uh, you do have the ability for your contract to go and collect liquidated damages from the contractor. The amount of three hundred and fifty dollars a day for each lake, they do not complete substantially within that timeframe. So, I guess the best answer that I have to your question is if they don't finish on time, you get money back.
That's not good news.
That's the best news I can offer you.
That's not good news, we got, we want them finished.
But, uh, no, I mean, I've talked to both of these contractors, and, 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 I mean, they both feel very confident that they can complete them within that time.
Okay.
I think part of the reason why the one bidder, um, Metro did not bid one eighteen, I, I think was purposely because they thought, well, you know, if we end up getting awarded all five of these lakes, we don't know if we could really do all five of them, so I think that's probably why they left that one off. So I think they've bid appropriately to what they think they can really do, um, and, and that's what they're obligated to complete, so.
And, and two is not bad, I mean, at least, and as we go forward, maybe we can find one out of these two, you know, that does a good job or, you know, whatever, so, I don't know.
Or I'm not opposed to if we get good bids from, you know, three or four that can be moving on these things simultaneously to get more work done. Because the longer we wait to get to the lakes that aren't in phase one, they're going to become phase one eroded.
Yeah.
So it doesn't get less expensive, it gets more expensive.
Yep.
That's, that's, those are my concerns.
And, and if I can add, it's related, it's not specific to the bids, and I don't know if, if anybody's heard, but somebody has reached out to the media regarding the condition of the lakes in, in Gateway, so that, that happened. In, in all of Gateway, and that Gateway is getting ready to embark on this program, so.
When did that happen?
Uh, it's happened, today we were notified by the Water Management District, they were notified by the media, so.
Good news spreads.
Yeah.
Is it appropriate then that we make a motion to issue a tentative award of contract?
Well, what I would suggest is that you have a recommendation from your engineers, that the yellow reflects for each of those lakes, what they believe to be the lowest responsive responsible bidder in bids, and they recommend an award to the contractor, Metro, for Lake eighty-six, one sixteen, and one twenty-six, and to Met Tower, for Lakes eighty-seven and one eighteen.
Now, when you say engineers, you want me and Danny to both say at the same time, like in unison, or you just say what he said?
Engineers, as some people would say. That's my understanding.
We.
That's your recommendation.
That's your recommendation.
Uh, yes, sir, yeah, I mean, the, the low bids highlighted there are our recommendation, there's the lowest, most responsive responsible bids, yes. Does that cover your, your concern?
That's what I used to do. I can't blame him for double talk, that's what I did.
I would like to see a young Ed tinkle up there.
For the record, Tyler has concurred with my statement.
And so I make that motion as, on the basis of the recommendation of our engineer, the low tentative award of contract, because they still have to give documents to these guys, they have to give bonds and all the paperwork back.
To notice a reward, what happens is, all, all the bidders get, notice that the award is proposed, have a chance to challenge it, and then the successful bidder, once the challenge period runs over, expires, enters into the contract.
To, to those two firms for the five lakes.
Before we get a second, and I'll ask for that, Ms. Flaherty wanted to ask a question or have a comment?
Yes, this is not on the agenda, are we putting it on the agenda?
It is on the agenda.
It, it all comes under that, or whatever that number was.
It is, if any members of the public are still here who want to speak, Mr. Connell? Mr. Connell, no, waves his bill.
Tony, with, with that, I don't think it needs to be a part of the motion, I, I would certainly like to entertain meeting with the vendors after award, if award is successfully made, to look at value engineering ideas to come back with a change order.
It's always an opportunity once you've gone through this process.
But that doesn't need to be a part of the motion.
Yeah, I, I would agree to that, yeah.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts, concerns, fears?
I do have a question, does that have to, the motion have to have anything about pending successful financing?
I think that's, didn't the bid documents reference that, or the contracts?
We're holding these for what, ninety days?
Yeah, the, the bid prices are, have to be held for ninety days, the, your question is, do the contract documents state that Gateway's going to get financing?
You know, payments contingent upon any appropriation of funding or financing?
I couldn't tell you the exact verbiage, but I, I believe it essentially covers your concern, I mean, if there's a specific language you're looking for, we could look into it, but.
It's something to obtain the requisite financing.
Okay.
The entrance of the contracts, yes.
With that, uh, I would, I agree to that.
Seconder agrees to that?
He does.
Okay, I will call the question, all in favor? Any opposed?
I was going to say, you're a wallet scout writer.
Can I show those gold coins?
So, just so, uh, for, for my clarity here, that's for the five lakes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's a, there's the materials also.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that.
It's a separate bid.
Yeah, that was a separate bid, uh, I would make the motion then.
I guess you need, I think, I suggest you have a presentation by Tyler, and also open it up to any member of the public who wants to comment on it.
I don't think Scott wants to talk about it.
Yeah, we did have two bids, we had the materials bids, and I think everybody has a copy or received a copy of the, uh, two, one in the amount of the three seventeen that's noted, which was the low bid, and the other one was, I don't remember the price.
Uh, so, at Tony's request, I guess I will present this as well.
And make a recommendation.
And make a recommendation, um, so, we received two bids, um, we, when we solicited this contract, there was two vendors that we pre-approved as a manufacturer of material, we received bids from both of those manufacturers, um, they actually came in a lot lower than we were expecting, I think our estimate on this was like four fifty, and the low bid came in at three seventeen, so.
Well, that is good news.
That was a good news, um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a very competitive price, just so you know, I mean, the, the, the aggregate here is that you're paying roughly, I think like seven, six ninety a square yard for material, for comparison, in the last projects that we've done, contractors were charging Gateway like fifteen, sixteen a yard, so, I mean, it was a pretty good savings. The, the, the low bid presented there of three one seven oh six five, um, from Propex is our recommendation to move forward with.
On that basis, I issue tentative award of contract to Propex as the low responsive responsible bidder for materials supplied on this project.
I'll second. I have a question on the motion. Have you decided when you're going to order the trash cans or whatever?
Conex, I think, is a term that Danny uses.
I think Chris, Chris has that, Bill.
Anyway, you're going to order some containers and they're going to be situated where?
Yonder, uh, right outside here, sir, that's the plan.
You can have a painting contest to make it look pretty.
When, and when that, might that happen? Say again?
Lake next week.
Lake next week.
We have four convicts that we have running, they're waiting our word on the delivery, and we're going to stage them right out here in the center area.
And you'll have the name of the contractor on the receptacle, huh?
Yeah, it'll be a checkout, just like they check dump trucks, when they come get it, it'll be, they'll have to sign off and take their part of the inventory in.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
No problem, any other questions before I call the vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda items, and I will ask.
Hold on, I think we have one for Steve, we have to approve, we have to approve the interim financing.
Resolution, um.
You're right, I know, I can.
Seventeen oh eight?
Seven, two thousand seventeen dash oh eight.
That's pretty no-brainer, isn't it?
Especially since they flipped it to a, to a solid, uh, interest rate.
Yes, they, I had a nice discussion with them.
I was going to say, I, I, oh, yeah, on that one.
I, I told him before the meeting, he did a heck of a job.
I expressed the board's concern, and they were okay with switching to fixed, so.
So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Before they change their mind.
Any questions? See you tonight, I will call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, Madam Chairman, I forget what the, I forget what the Robert's rules would say on this, uh, I have a question on the, yeah, I'm trying to think, I have a question on the motion that we just adopted.
Okay.
The amount that we agreed on is three million, but the amount that we just signed contracts for is four point something.
Three one seven.
Yes.
And you've got a, you've got a revised form, Bill, you've got a revised form for three, for four or four?
It's in your stack.
Part of the stack of stuff.
Thank you, I missed that, thank you.
That's because we have such a stack.
Yes, but, for, for the record, I guess, two thousand seventeen dash oh eight was amended to cover the full term sheet, which is a four point four.
I was looking at my laptop, it said three, and we've got to make sure that the minutes reflect the accuracy of these.
You are correct.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, I mean, that's one thing we, I wish we could look at, is how do we make real-time changes to the meeting book?
Yeah, we, we, we really do need to do that, that's another discussion. We've got to do something, because when you, when you're doing these projects, you can't wait two weeks and three weeks, you just can't do it.
But it gets, it gets kind of crazy when you've got so many things stacked up.
Yeah, it might be, I've seen some local governments where they have that, they have actually a separate change sheet, and then they have listed all the various changes to the various documents, and they attach those in red line format. I understand.
I mean, to Bill's point, I mean, he's, we're looking up on the screen.
I understand.
And we're reading one thing, and then it needs to be called out, this is, there's a change.
Right, just, I mean, actual, actual change sheet at the beginning of the meeting, you could have that for the meeting, at such and such a date, item so-and-so has changed, such change, so that everybody's, the public's aware and the board's aware.
It's tough.
That, that's doable, I mean, that can be.
I'm going to move to the consent agenda, uh, Ed, did you have anything you wanted to pull?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Bill?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to.
So moved. Prove a, A B and C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I will start with supervisor comments, because I'm the one that added this on here, I know that there had been some discussion of us having a board advance, and we kind of kicked that to the back burner, so I think that we need to start thinking about when we have time to do a board advance, where we can all meet and really discuss our goals.
This is Joe De Servo's retreat?
Yes, it is, it is.
Yeah, we got a lot of stuff to do.
Can we?
We don't have to decide tonight, I just wanted.
By, by the next meeting, can we have, can we come back, uh, each, each woman maybe relay something to April on when, some dates?
And I'll be in contact with Joe De Servo and, and see when he is available, because that'll make a difference too.
What are we looking at, a weekday local, or a weekend, or how?
Yeah, it would be helpful to have a, have a bit of a conversation on where you might hold this, um, so Joe's, Joe's idea of this is a more comfortable setting outside of the boardroom, but yet it is still a public meeting.
Thank you, and it has to be in this county.
Yes.
Correct, um, so I didn't know if anybody had any ideas at some of, you know, if there was a community, uh, one of the communities that we might have a place to meet. I'm not sure, or, or we could. I'm not sure. Or or we could exit the community and I can maybe try to find a meeting room at a hotel or something of that nature. By having an idea of where you might like to try to, your venue, would be helpful.
You have the hotel right down there at the intersection of, what do you call it, Daniels and Tree Line? And then the one that Bob had for that conference we had on new members. That was a nice venue too and very close.
The Hyatt up on Seventy.
Yeah, that was very nice.
You're going to pay for most of those, aren't you?
Yeah.
Know where the club, we can.
What if we can do it at the club? That's a possibility.
We could have lunch too.
We'd have to get a room. But if we get a date and hit far enough in advance, we could get it set up, yeah.
Why don't you just tell us when it's going to be then?
I thought, I thought we wanted to find out where Joe De Servo could go.
What club were we, were we speaking at?
I think he's talking to Country Club.
A little chip in the pub in between.
There you go. Social hours.
That was all I had. So Kathy, did you have any supervisor comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
One of them is the articles that I did send in are going to be published in their entirety. That's what I got back. So.
When was that? Do you know when it's going to be published?
It should be in the one that's coming out for March.
Okay, for March, because I wanted to post it. I wanted to announce it.
Okay, yeah, for the March lifestyle in the quarter. And and I also was contacted by another one that's going to start out in the springtime. So we'll be getting together with that one too.
Okay.
Okay. I will be starting another article because due to the fact they have to be at the beginning of the month. So if anybody has anything they'd like to put into the article, please contact April so she can contact me. Okay? And I'm just was brought to my attention, okay? When we approved our job descriptions with the hours annually for vacation and for sick and personal time, that the other employees have half of what we gave to the others. Are we going to, and they were not happy, some of the employees, are we going to increase their vacation hours in the future?
Well, I think there's a different class.
That's what I think too. It's a different class of workers.
They're basically hired at a different level. I think it, the next time, maybe the end of this year, we will, we should revisit.
Make your idea.
There has to be a different benefit level for, otherwise there's no incentive.
Doubled the amount that they had before. So it was asked, and I.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. And these, that's, we should be looking at that.
And just, and just a comment, it's, it's very helpful as we, as we move forward. And one of the things on the radar, once we get staffing where they need to be, is to evaluate and bring back to the board ideas and recommendations for wage and benefit package. Because I don't think that one should be evaluated without looking at it as a whole.
And it was my expectation that, again, we're starting this reorg from the top down. So we, we're putting these pieces in place. So these managers and and Chris will start to evaluate everything underneath them. I mean, there might be some changes down the road in in alignment and other things. So that's, that was the, that was the approach I was under.
Add this to the advance, one of the advance topics. It's one of the things we'd have to talk about.
And I think part of, part of putting the management structure in place is they'll be reviewing what they need for their particular departments and what those employees need. So I don't know that that really needs to come from a board level. I think that needs to be the management coming back to us and saying, hey, this is what we've got to do.
Let them do that.
Let them do their jobs.
Yes. Let them do their jobs. Anything else, Kathy?
That's it.
Bill?
Only that I continue to think we are making great progress. It's not always smooth and it's not always easy, but doggone it, we're making some headway.
I agree.
I appreciate everybody's good humor as we work through some very difficult projects.
Sort of like sausage.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll say, you know, we we are spending some money. But I think we're also putting a a structure in place where we're going to stop spending wastefully. And, you know, we can't, this board is not kicking the can down the road anymore. So we might have to pay for it, but we're not doing it. And the last thing is, I know staff is putting on the movie event in March.
Yes, the Public Safety more movie at the Sherman, at the Sherman complex. And I believe it's March eleventh.
And we just got confirmation that the Blood Mobile is going to be there. So we've got some advertisements that they're working on for that for us to post to the website. Staff has been working really hard to coordinate as much as they can with the limited timeframe for the afternoon because this is the first time that we're reaching out for a public safety event. So we're kind of being conservative just to see how much interest we're going to have. And, you know, maybe eventually it it becomes an independent event. But the events do take quite a bit of planning and coordinating. And so hopefully we'll have great weather and and it should be, it should be a good turn of light.
Yeah, so let's make sure that either we can get information out wherever we can, especially getting emails out to the HOA president so they can trickle that down.
Okay.
And I asked actually for that event to be advertised in the next Stony Brook Scoop that goes out.
Okay, good.
Which it will be at the first of March, so that everybody should have plenty of time to have gotten that information in our community.
All right.
I just, one thing, I've been working with Chris and we've been waiting for this day. We're going to be contacting all of the property owners on the five lakes. We've got, I guess, Chris, you and April have the mailing labels and everything. What we need to do is get a letter out and try to maybe hold two meetings, advanced meetings. One for maybe over at the clubhouse at Bristol Park, Crystal or Bristol Park Cypress K. Maybe the other one at the Country Club. Get all the residents that are along the lake, get them an idea of what's coming. And then also we talked about as a part of this is getting them all, because we're going to be in their backyards, and giving them maybe these little bundles of the wires that you stick in the ground, the locators, so that they can show us where their irrigation systems are. Because they're, they're going to get torn up and we've already talked about that, capping them off and this, that and the other. So they got to understand that when you tear up ground, as the people found out on one oh six, seven, eight and one oh four, it sometimes isn't pretty. So they need to be ready what's coming.
That's Chris's problem.
That's all I had.
Yeah.
All right. With that in mind, I will call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
This will be done at forty-four tomorrow morning.
I'd heard forty-seven.
Forty-four.